Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Casco Township Planning Commission meeting for July. We will start with our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just want to have a quick moment of silence. Our township and county certainly has been engaged with some terrible storms in the last week or so. So if we could have a moment, that would be great. Thank you, everyone. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. Are there any additions, can or corrections to the minutes of our June 20th meeting? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Tuesday, June 20, 2023 minutes.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Karen. Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, can or corrections to the agenda for this evening? If not, we can have a motion.
Make a motion to approve July 18, 2023's 7:00 PM agenda.
A second.
Thank you, Gina. There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Karen. Thank you. Communications. Do you want to hold off?
No, hold off.
Okay. All righty. Discussion from the floor. Colleen.
Good evening.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for having me.
You bet.
No, nothing at all.
You're good. All right, then we will move on to public hearings, number seven. We do not have any this evening. And we'll jump right into unfinished business. One of the items in our unfinished business is the adjustment to Article 2, Section 3, definitions in Article 14, Section 65, accessory buildings of the zoning ordinance to include regulation of hoop buildings. Karen, you want to give us a little background on that, please?
Yeah, so we had a previous public hearing to add language for hoop buildings, I believe, back in April. The original approved language, or the language that was approved at that hearing was to modify that the minimum square footage that required a building permit was to be 400 square feet. We got some feedback from the billing official that that was inconsistent with the Michigan Building Code. And he asked us to go back to the original 200 square feet. That was in the first proposed language. And that is what the planning commission has decided to do. In order to do that, we do uphold a new public hearing. And so a notice is going to have to go out, I believe, at the next meeting. We won't have the public hearing with the revised language showing the 200 square feet required. Or you have to have 200, less than, 200 square feet or less to go for it. And so that's what's going to happen with that.
Okay.
So that will be at the next meeting.
It's going to be good.
I simply, we could have a problem with that because of the timing of the newspaper.
Get out and ask that question, yeah?
Yeah, it's usually asked later, first we have, we're always like two months ahead of time here.
So we may need to move that out to our...
To September.
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 Yep.
Okay. Just to hinge on that to some degree, and Karen, Steve, just wanted to make sure that we all understand what we're up to here. In Article 14, Section 65, under L, hoop buildings are subject to the following provisions. And that was one of the items that we changed, right Karen, way back when. Is everyone comfortable with that, or would you like us to read those to you? That was good, Karen? Okay. I hope we did, okay. Under J, we had, Karen, we had brought to your attention, I think, at the last meeting and a couple of meetings ago about, well, what the occupancy correlation may be here. And we discussed that briefly. Should we walk through that a little bit, please?
Yeah, so there's been some concerns when it comes to accessory structures in the township that there have been issues where an accessory structure has been built or been used when the primary building, whether it's a residence or the primary use of the property, does not appear to actually be active. Whether someone puts up a whole barn on their property and there's a house also on the property. So you would think, oh, it's an accessory use to the residential use on the property. But what appears to be happening is it's an unoccupied house, no actual person living there. But yet there's someone who is building a whole barn to store whatever. And so to help with code enforcement and making sure that properties are being occupied, we're suggesting, under J, almost otherwise provided as ordinance, accessory is subject to all regulations applicable to the principal structure on site and following. Item number A, accessory uses in structures shall be clearly subordinate in area extent and purpose to, and we're suggesting the language, an established and active principal use or structure.
Okay. There was, and again, there was some discussion about occupancy that seemed to be important to huddle us here. Can we add that word into A?
Yeah, I was, do you think maybe accessory uses in structures shall be clearly subordinate in area extent and purpose to occupied and active, to an occupied and active principal use or structure? Would that be to use occupied as opposed to established?
I would consider so. You're looking at a number J?
Right here, the last page.
Oh, last one.
Oh, no. For the principal use, whether it's a farming or a cultural activities.
Oh, for the principal use?
For the principal use, yeah.
So it would be... Oh, this is where they want to escape the name, yeah, I see.
Okay, so there's really four things that we should just touch on before we decide what we're going to do. Number one is what we had originally with the, actually with the hoop buildings. They're subject to the following provisions, and that was provisions A through E. So are we all kind of in agreeance to that? Okay, the second one was, again, under D. Our hoop buildings will go from what we had before, which was 400 feet, to the 200 feet. And estimate our building code folks, and make that right. So our township board would like us to, in law, which is something we need to do. And so that would be one of the proposed changes. Under J, that is what we are talking about right now. And again, we are adding the word occupancy instead of established, is that correct? Okay. So that would be, what would be the changes, right Karen, that we had discussed and was brought out and moved along through the process? Planners, questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
How do we reinforce that, or how do we enforce that?
It's what our billing department wrote.
Okay.
And it will help them when they find some of those issues up there. Now we will have an ordinance that will be more congruent to what they need to do in the field.
Because there is a home that I know of that is unoccupied and has been unoccupied for a while. There was a whole barn going up, and it did go up. Just recently. And the home is still unoccupied. Everything is unoccupied. It's for sale.
And that's one of the issues we're trying to solve, to be honest, not to be wise, but that is true.
Yeah.
And that's more than...
Yeah, that's one of the examples, what's occurring that's going on this change.
So the building department would go and issue them a violation, but there's nobody there?
Well, they wouldn't grant a building permit unless they knew the home was occupied.
Okay.
Yeah.
In the future, yeah. In the future.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Is there a motion to accept the changes that we are looking at today?
I'll make a motion to change the square foot of a accessory building from 400 feet to 200 feet.
Yeah, the hoop building might be better.
Hoop building, okay. From 400 feet to 200 feet without needing a building permit. And also to change, do I need a separate?
Oh, you can.
Okay. And to change J-A from established, from an established and active principal use of structure to an occupancy and active principal use of structure.
And also just to, we're clear also, the hoop buildings from A through B, what we had before.
Okay.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Karen. There's a motion and a question.
Could the motion read, "I'd like to change, but to schedule a hearing, public hearing, to consider changes"?
Why was going to do that, though?
The motion, we need to have a motion to schedule, consider, the motion is to change it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay.
We have to schedule a public hearing.
Make a motion to change it and then schedule a public hearing.
Because you can't make a motion to change it until you have a public hearing, until after the public hearing.
Oh, that's true.
So should I start over? So just, okay, so change or to schedule a hearing of hoop buildings for 400 square feet to 200 square feet without a permit, what was the second part?
To change the wording of J-A, noxious weed uses of J-A. And instead of having an established and active principal use of or structure, to occupancy and active principal use of structure. Or structure.
I will say.
And that includes a public hearing, correct?
Scheduling a public hearing.
She's got the public hearing.
Does that make sense to you? Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Yeah.
Karen. Karen. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Karen. Okay.
Lot of words.
Yes. Okay, we will go into number C, which is primary residence occupancy as requirement for accessory building construction. I think we've already covered some of them.
Yeah, I should have.
It's under B.
We changed B.
No, yeah, they were in the B. C, C should have been B. B should have been C.
So there we go.
What else? That was part of A. There we go, Joe.
Okay, let's go to B, and we'll try and get through that by the way. Noxious weed ordinance. Karen, can you give us a little update on that, please?
Yeah, there's two documents. One is from the state of Michigan, and it's titled prohibited and restricted weeds. This is just information on all the plants that are considered noxious weeds in the state of Michigan. And then you also have attached the draft noxious weed ordinance. And this was a recommendation from the last meeting. This is basically the same language that our township uses for their noxious weed ordinance. And so this is draft version for Casco to take a look at. But it was similar to what we discussed last time. No weeds can be within, no noxious weeds are permitted within 60 feet of any buildings or structures. And then outside of that range, they can't come to a height of more than 10 inches. If the weed is not removed, the township will, can hire someone to remove them, and they'll be on our property.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. Questions, planners?
How do you put the weeds even out there? I couldn't tell you what all the weeds are.
Yeah, no doubt.
And if there's a field, is that part of it?
We got to take a picture.
Somebody's got to field to see if, that maybe doesn't rotate in, like for agriculture. And says here, is that part of it?
Just as something called vacant land right there means shall include also divided land listed on vacant in the township tax rules. Who wouldn't do that? Is that what they're repaying, vacant land?
Yeah, well, if it's on, basically, if it's outside of that 10, 60-foot perimeter from a building, the noxious weeds, if you're able to identify them, they can't reach a height of 10 inches. You've got to have it trimmed at least, because you don't want it spreading.
Which one do I, who's the expert?
Your common police officer.
Who's that?
The weed commissioner.
The weed commissioner?
Such a weird thing.
There could be such a curse?
I take a picture with my camera.
So all these people, farms would...
I found poison, I have to...
Go spray and kill it.
You know...
Keep on cutting it down every, every month?
Let me remind Mr. Chairman, I got a little bit of background on this. Recently, the township, we hired a code enforcement officer. And he was saying there in our township, they have a noxious weed ordinance. They primarily enforce this around residential sites or businesses where it's gotten out of control. He was telling, we're driving around today, he was telling me, you know, they don't, like farms, especially someone who has it for a farm, you know, letting a field by fall for a year or that. They don't do that. Primary is the blight around buildings.
Residences.
Residences or even, or commercial establishments that are...
Joe, there's a whole list of these, Karen, there's a whole list of these weeds.
Right.
And I guess I certainly wouldn't have had a clue.
I would.
Would you, Bill?
Anybody who's a gardener.
Oh, usually you take a picture.
You have a phone app that...
Yeah, they do have a phone app.
You can tell them by looking at them.
Yeah, but he's probably don't even apply that as well.
Is it a problem?
It's a height thing. It's not a weed thing.
It's both the height. We do have several places around the township that if we had an ordinance like this, it would do, go a long way in solving some of the blight issues.
Other questions?
So does it apply to farmers?
No.
So all the buildings that they got, all their old buildings, they can have all the weeds around?
But they don't do that.
Where down the street does?
Well...
Where, I got to play with it, go ahead.
Okay.
I'm just asking, you know?
I got your neighbor.
Because it opens up a lot of stuff. It's so broad when you say it, right, does my problem?
I mean, wouldn't it just fall under blight? Because you guys want to let someone's yard get out of control anyways, and then you go mow it for him, and then you put it on their tags, right?
Not without a noxious weed ordinance.
Oh, I thought that was very good.
That allows us to do it.
Okay. So if this would fall under someone even not mowing their grass?
Right.
Too extreme.
Yeah, right, right.
There's that empty house on five foot that's empty forever, it's outrageous looking. Nobody cuts it.
So, I'll be, I'm thinking, all right, I'll surprise him. So what are we doing here? Oh, we got to have a public hearing for this also?
No.
No?
This goes, this would be a recommendation directly to the board who would approve this as part of a general ordinance, this does not fall under the zoning ordinance. So you're just making a recommendation to the board.
Steve, do you see this in a number of communities?
Yeah, absolutely.
Right? I mean, it's working, Governor, and...
Well, what it does is it allows you, it gives you a hammer if it gets out of hand. And they're not going to, typically, ordinance enforcement officers don't go and drive it out the street, say, that's 11 inches or that's not. You know, it's when it could plate driven, or if it's really horrible, blocking a driveway, those kind of things. They'll say, hey, what do we say, we have an ordinance, standing by.
The, there's a five-day, like a five-day term if someone comes out or has discussion with the property owner? You get five days to, where's...
Oh, yeah. I'm starting to say law.
Would this include digits?
Yeah, it's a, among digits and all that kind of stuff.
That's counting. You got to be careful of the digits, someone will sue you now.
Yeah, if I ditched so deep, I would...
Oh, I saw it somewhere, where I thought it was like five days only for people to...
Failure.
Make some kind of... Over here.
Demand to remove, destroy, noxious weeds or grass present on the property within five days after receipt of such notice, in failure to perform such work. In time stated, shall result upon entry of the premises by the enforcement officer.
Entry of the premises?
By the enforcement officer and the persons so appointed by the township. To perform such work, starting clause of the private works.
That seems to be off a short window, but I guess in the whole scheme of things, it doesn't really matter anyway, because they're probably going to fight it from day one to day...
They would have had it down already.
Yeah, that's true. Okay. What's your pleasure, planners?
Well, I'll make a motion to recommend to the board...
Right, that's what we're going to do.
To approve the noxious weed ordinance.
As it stands.
As.
As written.
As written.
As written from, what do we call this?
Draft noxious weed ordinance, is that what you call it?
Yeah, should we date this or something today, or this, that was 718? Okay. That was presented to the board. Thank you. Jerry, is there a second to that motion?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, 3-1.
What can we report?
I better get out tomorrow. I better get out tomorrow with my weeds.
There's a difference between a member of another country.
Okay, I don't think it's against people that keep their costs together. I think it's against people that don't. Now, these are gross examples.
Right, right.
If I took you around the township pointing them out, you would, I mean, you would recognize it before I pointed it out.
Right.
Okay, folks, well, we took care of C, I believe. We are now on new business, number nine, discussion of solar energy. You should have received your packets at the last meeting, I believe. And there's a lot of material in there, a tremendous amount of material to look at and review. I think that, Karen, Steve, it is something that we need to take a real hard look at in our five-year planning program as to the houls and the wise and the therefore of solar and wind. And Steve, we, in your experience with other communities, would really help you to let us know what you're thinking, what you're finding out. When we went to the seminar, one of the things that really struck me, just trying to get to the bottom line, was we're going to go through all of these scenarios with our townships and municipalities. Okay. My question to them was, what is it, does the federal government, will they, does it sound like the federal government is going to take their, if they want to do it, the condemnation procedure? And did you come up, did you think that also, Jim?
I did.
Wouldn't you agree that?
I did, absolutely.
And we didn't know if it was federal or state or what have you. And we dealt with it so much out here, you know, with our towers and Interstate 94, I can tell you, many years ago, it's been a cost to a battle once you get into that condemnation situation. So that was an issue for me. That doesn't mean we shouldn't go at it and explore it, get all the information that we can, so we can bring it to the township board. And I think it should be dealt with in our five-year program.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Now, we do have already pretty robust solar ordinance for development of a large medium and small. Are you talking about the amount of solar, like in a township, like?
Yes.
Okay.
I really am, and that's a great point, Joe. Because, in fact, I think you and I were chatting about it one day, and Consumers Park was, what, the second largest property owner in our township. And so what concerns me, I assume, terrible word, I think if you can then take all their properties with solar power, then we can do it.
And you brought that question up, she did not disagree with it.
She, you're right, yeah. And she was from Michigan, University of Michigan, for instance.
Right, right.
Anyway, all that being said, this takes, in my opinion, a lot more concentration and movement because it's going to happen, and I think we should be prepared, at least we're going to try to hold it down. And to Joe's point, what does that mean? It might be the simple thing of saying, we only are going to allow 10% of our property in Casco to be solar power and/or wind. So if we, and that's just a number that's true, I pulled out here, who knows? But if we don't do something, if we all don't do something, as townships and municipalities, I'm afraid that we're going to get the wrong end of the stick real quick. So that being said, that's where we're kind of at, discussion from the planners. Especially Gina, you know, you were there, what were your thoughts?
Well, yes, I am. I agree with you 100%. When she was bringing up, she had Apple Michigan, and she had on there where there is a lot of solar panels, should I say panels? Okay, large, large areas. And there was like three areas in Michigan, was there, that had really a large amount of solar?
Right now.
Right now?
Yeah.
Right, and who's going to know, who knows what's going to happen in the future? I mean, we really, around here, I don't think we have that kind of empty land.
We can make it up.
Where the government can make it up.
Cut it all down.
Things by far, it's a difference.
I think, no matter what you write...
Well, they talked about farmland. Now, what they're trying to do with the farmland is they're trying to say that you could grow stuff underneath the panels.
You got to buy a little tractor.
Yeah.
Didn't they say that?
Well, she, to some degree, but I mean, if you have...
For farmland.
A windmill, you know, wind turbine. Uh, a windmill, you know, winter, you can still.
And she was talking about the solar, too.
Yeah, I didn't quite understand that, to be honest with you. But I don't know how you do that. Your solar panels is gonna take up space just with this. And there was no discussion, and this one, this one always gets me, is from the standpoint, with solar panels on your roof? You just voided your roof warranty. There is no, I have a fact in my life that will.
I never.
Or will warrant a roof when somebody else has put holes in it. Now, when you put panels up on the roof, that's to be secure. You have to go through your, your deck.
Yeah.
And it's a hole. So anyway, you never hear about that, but just an FYI.
Yeah.
Yeah, Joe.
If I address the, um, the board, the plant commission, yeah, it just, I guess, having a major energy producer already in the township, I mean, that's their job is to produce energy. They pour gas and oil on the ground. Them putting solar panels on their property, if we do set the limit to the amount of, so would we be in violation of?
How much percentage rights, how much property do they own?
I mean, if we, if I'm not mistaken, our, our, then it's a special land use. Our, we could require them to screen it if, if site is a, if that's one issue, site of solar panel or block. So I just, you know, just wanna be.
Well, if they're going large scale, wouldn't it be industrial?
Well, yeah, we, if you look in the ordinance, you get, we have small, which are like home-based, that's done administratively by the building inspector. We have some of them now, some of them are roofs and some of them are on the ground, medium-sized and large. Medium-sized and large are special land uses. There we have to come and apply, and that depends on the amount of acreage and that.
But we're dealing just, basically, our ordinance deals with the size. And what we do as a plant commission, we say, okay, put a tree here, put a tree there. It looks like this.
It looks like. By the size of the buildings and anything, probably, you can do that with solar.
So I think the bottom line here is, number one, I'd really like you to take a look at this information. And I wanted to ask you tonight if you received, um, a booklet. I don't know if any of you received this in your. Did you?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. It's tremendous, what's in here, that tells us a little bit. Steve, Karen, you, I'm not sure if you have this or not, but.
Who's here?
It's in, okay. So, um, that's where I'm coming from. And I, what I would like to do, or at least get permission from you to do, is put that in our five-year plan to review that in conjunction with our review of our zoning ordinance. So Steve, Karen, what do you, what do you think about that?
Well, firstly, I think you need to include it, I mean, discuss it as part of your master plan. When it's in the master plan, if you call issues or raise issues in your master plan, that gives you the right to create the ordinance later down the road. So it's something we need to look at.
Does the, actually, I think I will be, but the master plan gives us a little more.
Right. It gives you strength to challenge. Now, I do that a forewarn. Just stay a serious looking, they're taking control away from local governments. They don't like the fact that we may do what we wanna do.
Right.
And they're gonna come in and say, sorry, this is state law, you're allowed, you have to go anywhere.
Yeah, when I said that, I should have also included.
The state.
Our friends.
Governor, Governor Whitmer has this solar energy plan that includes trying to increase solar energy across the entire state. And she's not gonna be stopped by zoning this with the MTs.
Right. With what she's done in the past, I totally understand and believe.
But so this may not be, but there's nothing wrong with looking at it, in case she does it, then we have a plan in place, at least we've discussed it.
And we've discussed it and tried. I guess that's where I'm going. Karen, are we on the right track there?
Yes.
You think? Okay. Planners, your thoughts?
Jerry, you're not gonna stop them, so don't worry.
Well, I.
You don't got enough money to be in the court.
You can slow it down.
Slow it down.
Yeah, I think though, Jerry, if we have.
I'm not optimistic.
I, I get you. I, believe me, I understand. But if we have enough townships that try and do this, at least we can be heard.
Yeah.
And I think that's important.
If there's enough townships that get together, why couldn't we stop them? Just the state.
Don't they throw that word out, is it called eminent domain or something?
Evidence.
Evidence. It's coming regardless. Best for the future.
Well.
If I do that to the trails, I mean, but we won't talk.
If I'm not mistaken, only public, eminent domain could be used for stuff for those are like roads, schools that serve the public. This would be considered a commercial activity by solar farmers. So I don't, that would fall under eminent domain.
No, would we ever, there's a name. There'd just be a useful out of by.
Yes, by the state.
Yeah, they would stake the authority of the local governments to, to regulate that away from, like you're trying to do with Sandy Gravel.
Sandy Gravel, yeah, like they've done with prisons and cell towers and everything else. Adult foster care homes, when it gets controversial, Airbnb's, turnt arounds. All of those are imposed tremendously by townships. And unfortunately, the real estate lobby and the energy lobbies play more role to getting statewide legislators elected than townships. So, I mean, it's politics.
But we still vote, Steve.
Absolutely.
And. Well.
Well, quit, right.
Also, write your state legislator. You go right online, you could send them up, then, easy to do.
Joe, that's a great idea. Would we be able to get the township board if we got into this, something redefined in our five-year plan here?
Well, I mean, you respond as a private individual, and you go online, you know. You know, Jamie, Representative Jamie Green is Lindsayville North and was at, what's his?
Devaughn.
Devaughn, yeah, he is south Indian River State Senator.
Okay. I don't know if we really need a motion on that, we can include that, we can just keep it on our radar? Okay. Everybody reasonably happy with that? Okay. All right. Planners report. Thank you. And Jerry, there's some, I keep forgetting, at that meeting, there was, on the ZBA, there's some real interesting information for, for ZBA folks. So, and I'm sure you kind of looked at it, but, right, I mean, it was a real lengthy discussion, so, just at that point. Food for thought? Okay. Any other report from committees? Okay, I think we're okay. We'll go to session two, master plan five-year update. And I believe I told you we have a letter from, or St. Clair County, that we are able to get their master plan online. And so I'm assuming Karen, that you could probably do that next.
Yeah, reviewing their master plan, um, you know, see if there's anything that Casco Township needs to take into consideration. Right now, still doing the fact-finding stage. The public survey is still open, but I'm probably gonna close it out this week. It's been up for about a month and a half now. And we've gotten over a hundred responses, I believe, so. Okay, so I'll probably close it out Friday, so if anyone still wants to create their input these next few days, you can, the time to do it. I'll have a report on this, I'll do.
Okay. Good.
So our next steps, Karen, are, are, and I think we're somewhat on target, online, with what we're doing right now? Okay. And so what is our next, what is our next step, so to speak?
So basically, we'll review the first half, just the demographic information, least information, and then review your previous goals and see if you wanna, you know, how do those compare to what the situation is now in the township? And what you'd like to keep, what you'd like to modify. Start going over the, the goals and objectives.
Start identifying issues, issues might be, like you just said, tonight, solar issues may be limiting industrial development, whatever issue you wanna include it.
Keep us on track. The, and Joe, with our neighbors, our other townships, while we were talking, you know, about trends and then twenty-six mile road and all that, all that stuff. This is something, something for Steve, too, and Karen. Do we, down the road, are we going to review our master plan after it's approved from the township board with, with everyone? Or is that more of a county call or?
You share it with, when it's done, you'll share it with everybody and share it with the county. Now, last I had heard, the county was gonna start to get together, the townships along twenty-six mile road, to start talking about.
Oh, really?
Issues, but that was several months ago, I haven't heard of it since.
What was, if you might be addressing the board.
Yeah, Joe.
The, wasn't there, there's an effort there to commonize a lot of the ordinances in the township along there, along the Green State Highway.
So the county should lead us in that, I would think, right?
Yeah, I mean, if the county or else, I mean, up to those townships to, if we, you know, to take our own initiative, I'm not sure. I mean, I guess the county, county metro planning would guide us, but I think it's more on their own accord to do that, to reach out to the other townships.
Well, somebody here is obviously really, really strong.
Then we'll go from there.
You're the planner with the three of the five townships along there, so.
Okay, anything else, Karen, right now on the five-year plan? What you wanna bring up or, okay. Just real, real quickly, we met, I should have done this on committee reports, but we met with Lavender Garden. And that was an interesting meeting, right, Joe?
Yeah.
It was. And this is gonna be located on Church Road.
Yeah.
And it's quite a, quite a development. They're gonna grow lavender plants, a bunch.
Actually.
All I can say is the township is, should smell a little better down Church Road.
The one in, I don't like cities, actually, nice, really pretty.
Yeah.
You ever been by it?
Seriously?
Yeah, 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 I did. On the other side, twenty-one of Bandit.
Okay.
Last side, it's like.
Awesome.
Looking.
Right.
I think it's almost the same name.
Well, yeah, but that's been an operation for a long time. It's a pretty big operation.
But isn't it pretty cool?
Yeah. I have lavender, I have lavender. I have lots of lavender.
The, the applicant, yeah, the applicant did her research and the property is quite sand, it's the old Matouche pond.
Oh, yeah.
And they're finding out, hey, white rose and sand is lavender, but they need to put in a irrigation pond, a big irrigation pond, similar to like how we require golf courses to water themselves to have irrigation ponds, so that's what they have to do here.
Well, that's not much property there.
What's that?
It's not much property there.
The old.
What, this split up?
Split up.
Yeah, they have.
They have, they got a lot of sand there, they came from.
Was it about eighty acres or?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure, it was a lot, it was substantial.
Yeah. I mean, she, they did their research, they're an engineer here, I would say.
Okay, did, do they have, their finds it already? They have some.
They have some.
Is that the lawyer?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, the one with the house in the woods, a cabin?
Something like that.
Yeah, okay.
On Church Road.
Yeah, they bought.
You know, it's in Matouche's old place, where the, the.
No, I don't think they.
Springhouse was.
It goes around there.
Her artist's camp was.
There's a cabin way back in the woods, they bought it around that.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, right.
They did, my old platform.
Right.
Oh, okay.
The grandson bought, the grandmother bought.
Yeah, they did the whole thing, because the root tree did, and they did all the.
Black.
Yeah.
And she's thinking about doing sort of like a agritourism, sort of like how we do the corn maze, but I guess lavender seeds are what, only a few days long.
Lakeshore Samhain. Seasons. Lakeshore Samhain. My lavender is still blooming now. Lavender blooms, starts blooming in June.
It depends on the weather.
It goes to September, you know.
It's a long, it's a long season.
It would be tripping for, because it had us a right of way through there.
Oh.
Yeah, Joe.
Yeah, one, I guess one, if there's no other questions, I should have read two on, from reports from committees on. Their, Wednesday, August thirtieth, seven PM, we're gonna have a combined ZBA plant commission training session. August thirtieth, yeah, Wednesday, August thirtieth. I got permission from the board to buy bucks recommended by our planner, plus permission to pay both, both the plant commission and the ZBA members. I'll be sending out letters.
Okay.
Because we have a lot of new people, I'd like to get them through it, and even.
Training, you said?
Yeah, training, combined ZBA plant commission training.
August thirtieth, Wednesday.
Yeah, and I'll be sending out letters to everybody. Even if you've been on it for a long time, reoccurring training is a good thing. In the military, we always call it anti-slurry training, you do the same thing, you sharpen your skills up, and that's, that's the purpose of this. I can't be here, nor if I will be at an important meeting with the ZBA, trying to sort out some stuff. But, yeah, but, yeah, it'd be a really good session, yeah.
Yeah, I totally agree, you never, you never get to the bottom. From where in New York City? It just changes.
It changes all the time.
It does.
Well, and now, a couple other things, too.
Okay.
Like I said earlier, we hired a new co-enforcement, working with him, he's very skilled, knows his work. He's done it now down in Ira Township now for a couple of years. And we're looking for, for him to get results here in Ira Township. And it's something we've needed for a long time. And so, and the last thing is, we've had, we got two bids in to develop phase one and phase two of the township park. So, I mean, they're within several thousand, I mean, a few thousand dollars, several thousand dollars or whatever, but I told both of them, you know, it's up to the township board to make the final decision at our, on August eighth meeting. So.
That's great news.
Yeah.
Very good to go on. We need that real bad.
Yeah.
We'll plant lavender there.
Yeah. There you go. It's all saved out of that.
All right, anything else, Joe?
We can fix that.
Okay. Thanks, everyone, we need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Jim, is there a second to that motion? Gina, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The votes carried, thank you, folks, be careful going on.